Can you hear me?
Not yet.
Time out.
Oh, no, it's going, okay.
I don't know. The light's not staying on. Okay.
That's better.
Okay. Welcome to this regular planning board meeting on April 27, 2023. Madam Secretary, can you please call the wall?
Mr. Bernardo? Mr. Katzoff?
Here.
Mr. Lilly?
Here.
Mr. Hindeman?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Dole?
Here.
Councilman McAvoy? Mr. Neal? Mayor Roman?
Here.
Vice Chairman Fresky?
Present.
Chairperson Pearson?
Here. Also here.
Mr. Misara, present.
Yes. And also joining us tonight is Boswell's own Alvaro Gonzalez, who's our engineer. Can everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? The notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Township of Verona Planning Board, which is being held in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center. Located at 880 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona, specifically the time and the date were included in the public meeting notice. This information, along with the meeting agenda, was posted at the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the Township of Verona, the Verona City Group Times, the Star Ledger, at least 48 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and public handouts for this meeting can be viewed online at www.verona nj.org/planningboard. A public comment period will be held in order as listed on the meeting agenda, and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. At this time, we will open public participation for any member of the audience that has a comment or question on anything that is not on this evening's agenda. If you do come to the mic, please do not state your street address. We have Daniels Law now. We are just asking for you to come up, state your name, and state your municipality. Thank you. And so, seeing none, we will move on to item E, which is approval of meeting minutes. Has everybody received both the March 16 special meeting minutes and the regular meeting minutes on March 23? Does anybody have any comments or corrections?
None.
Would somebody, can we move them both at the same time?
Minutes?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes both in one.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Doc Deold. Mr. Deold.
Madam Chair, I need to abstain from the March 16 minutes as I was not present with them.
Noted? Okay. So, why don't we actually bifurcate that, then? So, can we take just a general eye vote on March 16?
Aye.
Vote to approve? Aye. Abstention from, you got that? Okay. And for the March 23 meeting minutes, vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Any vote to disapprove or abstain? No. Okay. We're through that. We will now move on to item F, consistency determination. We will be, you have all received an ordinance, ordinance 2023-15, amending Chapter 150 zoning, the historic preservation section 150, 22-13 of the code of the Township of Verona to designate 11 Coal Road as a landmark. Being that we just passed our new master plan, which actually called for us to start providing new landmarks to the township, I mean, I kind of think that you couldn't get more consistent, but.
Yeah, absolutely. That property's listed in the appendix, and that neighborhood was identified as a site for potential districts, so I think it's squarely in line, as the chair said, with our historic preservation element.
I agree.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I? I made these comments during the council meeting, that I went over there and looked at the house in question, and it is truly unique in Verona. It's, you know, not just the fact that it is historic, but the architecture of it, its layout on the property, the setting that it's in, is something that is truly special in this community, that I think it actually is really one of a kind. I greatly appreciate the owners of the property going through this process to make this designation, and I think that this is, if we're going to start anywhere, this is exactly how we want to start, so I am very much in favor of doing this, and I do feel it is consistent with the master plan. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? If there are none, then I suggest we make a motion to find the amendment to our zoning code consistent with our master plan. And I would like to see a motion to.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Mayor makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Katzoff?
Madam Chair, just for clarification.
Sure.
It's ordinance 2023-15.
Yes, I think I said that in. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, to find that ordinance 22-15 is consistent with the Verona master plan. Okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Katzoff?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Hindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Dole?
Yes.
Mr. Councilman McAvoy? Mr. Neal? Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fresky?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. Would you like to?
We are going to nullify Mr. Bernardo's vote. We have seven members, and Bernardo is the alternate to see.
I apologize. I always like to have extras.
We appreciate his support of the action.
All right. I believe at this time, we should be moving right along to the continuation. I'm sorry, I lost my agenda already.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a small point of order on that.
Sure.
I do enjoy, even if it is not registered as a vote, hearing the alternates' opinions or votes, and I encourage them to give them before we do a roll call.
Would that be something?
Alternates are certainly allowed to participate in any dialogue, discussion, etc., and I think it's always been practiced.
But that doesn't mean that.
They vote.
I like the suggestion, but at the same time, I don't know what the rules of order is.
For the sake of the minutes and not causing confusion, yeah, I'll invest if I just withhold comments at the appropriate time.
Well, no, you're allowed to participate like anybody else, you just have the room.
And I'll second what was earlier said, is that as part of the deliberations of this board, the alternates have always contributed to the discussion. They have an opinion, they help us reach decisions, they simply don't have a vote on the formal action. You know, more strength in numbers, so I'm glad to have the extra opinions.
One moment, please. Okay. At this time, we are going to move on to letter G, continued from the regular March 2020, I'm sorry, March 23, 2020 meeting, application 2204 preliminary and final site plans for One Sunset Block 303 Lot 1.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members in the public, John Anglino from the law firm Anglino Taylor, on behalf of the applicant, One Sunset Avenue LLC. Applicant has applied for major site plan approval for a 200-unit multifamily inclusionary development comprised of 185 market rate units and 15 units of affordable housing with respect to property located at One Sunset Avenue, also known as Lot 1 in Block 303 on the tax map of the Township of Verona. As you know, this application is brought in connection with the Mount Royal Settlement, which is part of the record. We've had seven hearings since the commencement of these hearings on this application dating back to August 25 of 2022. Tonight, Madam Chair, we have one witness, Linda Teicher, of Linda Teicher and Associates, who is our landscape architect, and at this time, I would like to call Ms. Teicher as my one and only witness this evening.
Thank you, John. Can everybody, can everybody hear me?
May I swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the chair?
I affirm, thank you.
And could you please state your full name and city for where you're from for the record, please?
My name is Linda Teicher. I reside in Dallas, Texas. I am registered in New Jersey and seven other states.
So, Ms. Teicher, if you would please provide the board with a little bit of your professional background, if you could include your educational experience, your professional experience, and any licenses that you possess.
Okay, yes, thank you. My background is a graduate of Michigan State University. The first part of my career was practice in Michigan. I am registered in New Jersey, Michigan, Texas, the state of Arizona, the state of Washington, the state of Oregon, the state of Tennessee, and in process of registering for North Carolina.
When you say registered, you mean you're licensed landscape architect?
I'm licensed landscape architect of all of those pending in North Carolina, which is in process.
Okay.
The specialty of our firm is urban development and multifamily development. I've been in practice for a long time, but since 2011 especially, and up until now, we've really specialized in multifamily development all over the United States.
And have you prepared landscape architectural plans that have been approved in connection with similar applications in municipalities in the state of New Jersey?
Yes. We've done approximately 10 projects in New Jersey and close to 20 projects in this area with this client. Right now, we're working on this project in Verona. We're also working in the Township of Randolph. We're also working in the Township of Warren. Those two projects are approved, and of course, we're going through approval here in Verona.
So, Madam Chair, respectfully, I request that the board accept Ms. Teicher as an expert in the area of landscape architecture.
Nobody has any objections. I believe that she is acceptable.
Thank you very much. So, Ms. Teicher, would you please describe the plans that you prepared in connection with this application?
Yes, and I don't know if we have them on the screen. I assume that everybody has a copy of the plans.
Why don't we put up the first page?
That would be great.
And then, if you can, when you're ready to move to another page, jump no.
Of course.
He'll do it. And these are the exact plans that were submitted, correct?
Correct.
So, I defer to Mr. Misara as to whether you want to mark them or not.
These were received, I think, on the 12th, April, if I'm not mistaken.
May I request the district of Consey, if you want?
Okay. You know what, I should have, I don't know where we left off on the exhibits.
Do you want to dim the lights a little so that you can see, or can the board see?
That might not be a bad idea, if we can do so.
Mr. Anglino, can we, why don't we, maybe eight, one, four, dash, twenty-seven?
Yeah, that's fine. Four, dash, twenty-seven. And when we complete, I think we indicated, we will call the record and match up all the exhibits.
Okay, can you all hear me clearly? Yeah, it would be great if you could really sit on the, on the mic, because it. Okay. How about now? Is this better? Okay. I'd like to, even though you've received the plans, I'd like to give a description of the plans, and then I'm going to go through showing you how we have been responsive and listen to some of the comments of this board, and tell you how we have changed and modified the plans. We have a building that has a natural area around it, which we are seeking to preserve and enhance. Of course, there's the 30-foot buffer along Sunset. We have an entry drive and a motor court to the project. At the entry, we have a bluestone patterned concrete terrace with an adjacent water feature to welcome people, and I won't get into the engineering things of truck maneuvers and everything for that motor court, but they have been through quite a process on it. We, in our documents, have vigorous protection of existing trees to remain, and I'll cover that a little further in the presentation. We have been extremely respectful of neighbors, so the three courtyards you see are enclosed by buildings, trying to keep any of that gathering area from disturbing surrounding neighborhoods. We have what we call a swimming pool courtyard. We also have a, what we call a passive courtyard, and we also have what we call a quiet courtyard, which is the closest to residential. I will now ask to go to the next slide, please. The swimming pool, yes.
Yeah, so that would be the swimming pool courtyard plan, which we would mark as A2427.
Which we call L102 in our set.
Right.
Okay. This courtyard, I've done a lot of swimming pool courtyards, some of them very multipurpose. This one is basically a swimming pool courtyard. It does have the, a functional trellis and a fire pit under that trellis. We do metal trellises. We don't do wood because we don't combine fire and wood. It also has water walls as you come out, and it has, they're mosaic, and the water falls down the walls, so they look good when they're not operating and they're closed in the winter. And of course, it has a tanning ledge with lounge chairs in the pool, and it has pretty large-sized patios with as heavy a separation in green space in those patios as I can get for those residents who would like to be at the pool, but we want some sense of separation. Okay, if you could go to the next courtyard? And I'll come back to any of these slides if you have questions.
And this would be the passive courtyard plan, which we could mark as A3427.
And we like to create courtyards that allow residents to gather, and so we have a large dining, what we call a community table, which will have a chandelier over it. We have a bar grill and a serving bar, so that there can be community meetings and community gatherings. We have a little herb garden there. We also like to do a little circulation walk, so that people can visit on a, you know, two neighbors together, just having a little walkabout, and it truly value green space, and that's what people use the most in courtyards, so we'll have Adirondack chairs, and if they want to show a movie, it will only be portable, we don't build in anything like that, and that type of thing. So, that is the passive courtyard. And the next slide, thank you. And this one, of course, you can see the proximity and where this is located in the project.
So, this would be the quiet courtyard plan, which would be A4427. Sorry.
That's okay, John, thank you. Here, we have limited the activities. We do have one fire pit under the trellis, and we do have a, we don't use wood, we use a structural porcelain tile that is slip resistant for a little deck, and again, a walkabout in a green space, and plant materials and patios, and heavy screening that goes in this courtyard, and I will show you on the site how that works. Okay. If we could go to the next slide, please. This shows you some of the site furniture and lights. I will get it, you have to announce every, I will get it.
So, this would be A5427 site amenities.
This shows you the two different types of lights we would use. I've been doing a lot of work in Portland recently, and I'm so dark sky conscious, that city is just incredible when it comes to that, and I believe every neighborhood deserves that. So, you see the Linnea Ballard is dark sky rated. That is our Ballard that we're using on the project, and then you will also see a Nihaven Lewis-Polson light, again, heavily shielded, and that is what we're using as our pedestrian street light. You'll see those along Sunset, you'll see those on the drive, on the pedestrian walk, walking up to the motor court. So, those are the two light types. In those courtyards I mentioned, you'll see that we use some fire pits that are really, really sturdy and can be controlled. One of them is the Grand Corinthian, the other one is a Paliform fire pit, very safe with timers, and we'll talk a little bit more about the permeable pavers that we're using in parts of the site, and that's what I wanted to go over on this sheet, please. The next slide.
So, the next would be landscape. Landscape planting plan would be A6427.
And I'm not, I'm not going to go through each of these, because they're in black and white and a little harder for you to even read on the screen, and I want to also address your comments, so we'll go back to these as we need to. I do want to show that we are stringent on tree protection, so we will have tree protection fencing. We do not allow contractors to clear a site. That is one of the main things that really hurts trying to save existing trees. What people think of as messy weeds, we call native cover, and we don't want it touched. So, yes, please. Before you, because I know that you don't want to go back to every single one, I just have a brief question. Yes. It sounded like you started off by saying you are going to preserve more trees than on the original plan. Did you, can you just, okay, give us a little more detail on that? I'm not asking for each specific tree, but if you are not taking down as many trees as the first plan had said, then I would, I think everybody would like to know that. I don't think the, the civil engineer did the survey. The civil engineer determined which trees are being removed, okay? We worked in a team with the civil engineer. No one can enter the 30-foot, that's why you see that motor court shaped as it is. We, I think this might be what you're referring to, we are planting more trees by 14 than the civil engineer indicated his planting. There seems to have been some confusion, and one of the reasons is the civil engineer was brought on the team before we were. The intent for the civil engineer is to do a survey, to tell us every tree that's on the site. The intent for the civil engineer is to tell us, along with the architect, what trees must be removed to build this project. Our job is tree mitigation. We are the ones that select the trees, which we've done off of your list, reading your ordinances, off of your list, and we are the ones that place the trees, since we're the ones designing the landscape architecture, the civil engineer is not going to place the trees, we are. And you are correct, we are planting more trees by 14. We're at 235, and they were, I just remember my number, but we're about 14 trees more than they were, but I can't, and then I had our office, which was another thing that you are talking about, I believe, I made our office, although we can't show the whole survey, we can show it graphically, but we can't label the whole survey, but I did make my office on sheet LS1, show me the big trees that are in that 30-foot, and it's, it's not a matter that I saved them and other people didn't save them, it's just that I wanted those big red oaks labeled on the plan, and there's been another few discrepancies that were noted. We are constantly working on the plan, and it's hard. There's one thing that we really have put a lot of effort into, which I think it's important that you're bringing it up now. We have studied, I've been to the site twice, we've studied photographs of how this site looks in the winter, how this site looks in different times. I can't tell you I've been here for every season, but I have the photographs. One of the hard things to do as a landscape architect is to provide neighborhoods with screening, additional screening, which is what you want, and not destroy this beautiful forest that's grown together, that's a bit wild, that represents some of the beautiful wooded areas of Verona. So, we are picking trees that we think we can insert, or at least backdrop or put in the foreground. That's always in our thoughts, so I hope I've answered your question. There is no disconnect. We have not determined the survey, nor have we determined, our office has not determined which trees will be removed. We've reminded everybody, no, I don't care what the truck radiuses are, you're not getting in that 30-foot buffer, no matter what. Okay, I understand. You did not determine which trees were going to be removed, and therefore, you did not add any trees to be saved, so I get that. Okay. You said that you are adding 235 trees, and I understand that. I agree with it, because I did another spreadsheet based on it, but it is a reduction from the last plan, which was 243 trees, no? Yeah. I mean, I, I, there were a few cases, Madam Chair, where the trees we were proposing in that screening buffer, we felt, just what I was saying before, we felt that a few of them were too close to the trees we wanted to preserve. I understand. So, that's, that might have, you could be right. I, I, my notes indicate that 235, which is 14 more than the other data that you got at first, but if we're at, if we've cut from 243 and we need to get back to that. I just want to make sure there's ample screening, and I want to make sure that the trees have ample space to grow and to succeed. So. Absolutely. I understand, I'm not, I just wanted to be clear that it was a reduction from the last plan. So, please, please move on, unless somebody wants to ask a question. Thank you. Thank you. So, what I'd like to do now is go through, the engineer, Bosworth, gave a very good compilation of a lot of things that we have been working on. We have answered some of those questions before, so we answered site planning questions in writing, we answered environmental commission questions in writing, but I'd like to go through a response to the Boswell, excuse me, Boswell, letter of April 17, 2023. Okay. 1427?
Yeah.
A1427. I'm sorry, A1. Okay, I'm sorry. That's okay, does everybody have that? Yeah. Okay. So, the first one asks us to give a summary, in essence, of the things that we've changed. We did a submittal to you originally, and then we have listened to your comments and changed the plans in certain ways, and that's what the first item in this report wanted us to do. So, we have, let's see which would show the best. Let's go back to LS1, please, the overall site plan. I have to carry my speaker with me, because I'm turning, I'm hoping you're hearing me. Keep going back to L101. Keep going back to L101. Our drawings are pretty intensive. They're pretty big, so.
Do you want to move on to another question that doesn't require a diagram for the moment?
Well, I think he can leave that up, and I can probably do it based on that. Okay? I think one of the most important things that we did was we, well, basically, it's, some of these are all combined. We added more screening, and we added more diversity to the plant palette. I explained in a previous email or letter that we, sometimes it takes a while to get clients to kind of move towards that diversity. And we have more diversity for our screening, a lot of evergreens. Okay? One of the changes is exits from two of the courtyards were entered, were shown. Okay? And obviously, we had to work with the engineers on the motor court to try and get truck delivery and that type of thing. That was changed. We added some permeable paving. We also added a bio-retention basin in the back. Those were engineered by the engineer of record. We don't engineer or provide cross-sections for vehicular pavement. So if you want sections, which I noted that you did in the report, that will need to come from the civil engineer.
May I just clarify?
Yes.
The permeable pavement that you're just, that you're talking about is in driveway one, correct? Or are you talking about permeable pavement that might exist near the swimming pool or in one of the courtyards?
Oh, the courtyards.
In driveway one.
It is in driveway. It is only in the driveway. That is correct. And the, you can see the area near the quiet courtyard that is a stormwater retention basin. Okay? That stormwater management is being handled by the civil engineer. Another thing that they asked us for clarification, the engineer did, evidently your sets were not printed somewhat in color or that our color got left off. But that line at the bottom shows you an existing fence that's being redone, a 42-inch-high fence that will keep people from falling off. And it won't damage the trees because it's already existing in the trees. Okay? So that fence is being replaced. That was one change.
And the fence will be what material?
It will be metal. It will be a metal decorative fence.
And will it be solid or will it be?
It will be open, vertical pickets, open. It'll be considered a guardrail, but I would consider it a decorative fence. It would be a fence like you would see on a patio or a balcony. It will be code, no, nothing gap. Pickets must be four inches on center so a certain-sized sphere cannot pass through. It would protect someone, and hence the 42-inch-high guardrail. Okay? And there's an existing wall as you get closer to sunset that will remain, but the guardrail will be put on top of it. This will not affect the trees. It would affect the trees if we were putting in a new fence line in a forested area, but replacing the fence line where it is should be fine. One of the items that we were asked for by Boswell Report was to show the seating around the fire pit in the quiet courtyard. We will be happy to do that.
Can you just answer, they asked, they asked what color the metal fence is?
Black.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No problem, no problem.
Quick question on the fence?
Yes, sir.
So we can get over it?
Yes.
Is, it sounds like it's not like a, it's permeable. So squirrels, rabbits can go under, through, or around it?
Oh, they will go over it. And bunny rabbits and squirrels, they'll, it'll stop little kids. God forbid, and it'll stop anyone falling.
That's.
Yes. And the law really requires any grade, change of grade over 30 inches, you've got to have a guardrail. So it's, yeah. We, again, I answered the question on permeable pavers. I applaud you on asking for the section. That needs to come from the engineer. I wanted to control the look of them a bit more because it's prominent. And so that's why I put the picture. I did a big project with that exact permeable paver. I watched in amazement as the water went through it. It's a great-looking one. It's available in those beautiful colors so that it looks fantastic. Not dull-looking, but very residential-looking. We, the next item, number six, I believe there was a typo. Actually, we have 16, two groupings of eight of American hollies. Again, our direction at first was from the client to use arborvitae. They had had great success. We listened to the township of Verona. We have much more diversity. We've added three evergreens to the arborvitae. We haven't eliminated them entirely. But on this particular drawing, which is L107, there are two groupings of eight American hollies. And that was one of the recommendations in an earlier environmental report, that that would be a good tree to use.
I think right now I should probably just weigh in. You are, you had 113 American arborvitae, and you've reduced it to 57 in your entire planting scheme. And I do appreciate the effort to diversify, adding some Leylands, which are great around here. They're very, they're hardy. The deer don't really nibble at them, and they grow very fast. So they provide very good screen for surrounding neighborhood. The problem is, is that there's still 57 American arborvitae, and they will, they are just salad bar for deer. And 57, I, you know, I'm not, I will say this. It would be better if the applicant would potentially think of the Green Giant arborvitae, which are much less happening with, you know, deer restauranting.
I think that's an oversight on our part because in the township of Randolph and in the Warren project that we're doing, it says Green Giant. So, so noted, Madam Chairman. And we will put Green Giant. And since we've added the diversification of three other species, if you feel strongly, we will still further reduce the arborvitae, but we will go to the cultivar you have suggested.
Right.
And we'll still get the numbers down even more.
I do appreciate that. I just want to maintain the screening. And I think that you're going to end up with basically lollipops.
And I don't want.
Because the deer will eat the bottom. And then those trees really won't survive because they just continue to get eaten every time they start to grow.
Even the Green Giant, even the Green Giant, if we go down to maybe 30 of them instead of 50-something and go to Green Giant, then we'll have four.
Green Giant would be good. I would really tell you that arborvitae, American arborvitae, the regular American arborvitae is, I really recommend that you consider totally doing away with that and maybe picking two other types of evergreens for screening purposes that grow well, that are less, you know, that are more deer-proof, I should say, and less deer-friendly.
We can do that. We can do that.
You know, if you could provide that, I think that would do everyone well because then you won't be replacing plantings, and you're spending money once, not five more times.
Very good. We'll take.
Does anyone have any?
Yeah, my only comment, and I noticed the high arborvitae count and was going to ask if we could do it, but less about the deer, more just for biodiversity because we have a lot of that at town. And I've noticed, just driving around town, that they didn't get diseased because they're concentrated all together. And, you know, I just see it a lot.
I'm a huge proponent of biodiversity, and I will make sure. We have four now, but if we totally eliminate arborvitae, then we will try and get, we will get back to four. We will pick a substitute. We have all kinds of lists that are on your Article 10 on the buffer zone and landscape guidelines. I've got the copyright here. We will do that. Okay? We'll try and get to five.
There is deer ratings. There are deer ratings there that were provided through various native planting websites and Rutgers. So please.
So noted. We will do that. We will take care of that.
Thank you.
And send you a set of planes. We have the next item. The examiner has asked us to provide the caliper of some of the small trees. You know, maybe we show the gallon size but not the caliper, or maybe we haven't shown it at all. But we will add that two-inch caliper to our planting notes. So that will be taken care of. Another item on the plans that was by the reviewer, we show a hard line that shows the shape of our curvilinear and natural-looking beds. We will label that line and say that that is a spade cut. But we don't believe in steel edging by and large. It rusts and becomes a mess, and it becomes a nightmare. We like a more natural approach. So when we say native cover, and we've been driving around this afternoon, we, that's the forest. We want to leave the forest alone. We want to leave, what grows there, grows there. That line that indicates the edge of the curved bed is a spade cut. And that, we will label as the spade-cut bed edge line. We will make sure that that is very notable on the plan so we can take care of that. Another good note that we have had on drawings in the past, examiner has asked us to add a note. What takes precedence? The quantity on the plant list or the plan? It's always the quantity on the plan. Contractors obligated to plant in location the number of plants and trees we've indicated. So we will put a note that the quantities on the plant list is an aid to bidders only. On some apartment multifamily projects, we won't tabulate on the list. But the township of Verona found that useful because then you can go and see how many of this and that. Okay? Another question the applicant said is, describe the irrigation system. We have a note on the plan that says the irrigation will be fully automatic, underground, with rain stat and freeze stat. We also have another note on the plans that say drip irrigation is not allowed. And we say that for a reason. We have worked in many, many environments, and we find that drip irrigation, just like steel edging, is a total mess, is not maintainable. Contractors put it on top of the ground and put mulch on it, three hard rains, and you'll see the tubes all over. Our multifamily clients who are providing an environment that's a home for people who choose to live in multifamily, it's not fair that they see those exposed pipes. True drip irrigation, which we've done for two lead platinum buildings, true drip irrigation's much harder to install than that. And it has to go under four inches of soil, and it has to have a signal head on every zone. And it takes tremendous work to watch the contractor do it properly. And even so, there's more problems. We now have high-efficiency heads that are as environmentally conscious as drip irrigation is. Our office does not prepare irrigation plans. We do what's called performance specifications. We, this is all written in specs that will be issued with our final drawings. So we have our notes that tell the township, this is the type of system. No drip, high efficiency, underground, automatic, rain stat, freeze stat. That's as far as our office goes. So if the owner chooses to send us the shop drawings of the irrigator, we will look at them only to see that they've irrigated all the planting areas, and we will look to see if they put in drip. We will not guarantee the hydraulics and the 100% coverage. We're not licensed to do that, and that is the irrigator. But we've done so many projects. All we're trying to do is protect the community so that you have something that works for many years. So that's, that was one of the notes that was on the, on the thing from the examiner. Now, the maintenance schedule depends on the quality of the owner of the project. I don't write maintenance guidelines. We would be capable of doing that, but we're not usually asked to do that. I know the history of this client, of this owner, and I am certain that they will have expert maintenance on the project and keep the project in pristine shape. And it's to their benefit, totally. They have a track record in New Jersey that goes to many, many projects. So I can't, maybe someone else will testify more. They have excellent property management skills and people who have been with firms a long time. So I'm sure that will be very well. I can't also speak to performance bond. That would not be in my purview. I can speak to the fact that a two-year guarantee for planting is not only recommended, it's on our drawings already. So that, that will, it's under contractor notes on sheet LS13. It's the first line in the deal that says two-year guarantee on plants. We've kind of touched and zoomed ahead in our conversations. We have talked about the fact that we are using Leyland Cypress and American Holly and Little Gem Magnolia as trees that we feel we can insert into, into the, into the tree canopy. We've already talked about the civil engineer did the tree survey, but the replacement trees and mitigation is indicated on our plans. Seasonal color, we're going to go to, you know, New Jersey-friendly yards. In other words, we're going to use our sources. We know you're having a trouble with impatience. We won't use impatience. We will add to our plant, we will add to our plans. We don't know when the project will finish. If I were to specify seasonal color now, I could be specing the wrong seasonal color to plant for when the project is finished. So I will put a chart on the drawings that gives you the seasonal color for the different times. And again, if you want to vet that, once you get that, you're more than welcome to. I try and do my research to make sure that I'm using things that I think will thrive here as seasonal color. But we don't have much of it. Don't be deceived by seeing 2,000 or 3,000. That's nothing. It's four-inch pot, six inches on center. It's thrown away, I'm sorry to say, but it's annuals. It's seasonal color. We don't have much of it. We've got lots of other interests. We have all kinds of perennials and that type of thing.
Did you, can you go back to the, you kind of skipped over the tree. Most of your trees and the plants that you've selected require full sun. And I guess one of the environmental commission's concerns, one of my concerns, is that the understory plantings are not going to be receiving the full sun that they require in the shadow of the larger plantings that grow up and above them.
Well, we did listen to that on two levels. Okay? We did make a change to our plans to listen to the environmental commission, and I'm glad that you brought that up again.
It's right here.
Yes, I know. I know. That's good. We moved, we are doing screening. We have residential neighborhoods around, so we want evergreens and we want some screening. We have moved, if you study those plans carefully when we inserted these other three diversified, non-monoculture, we moved the new trees out from totally within the canopy. And also, the spreads that we're showing are eventual spreads. And so we do not have overlapping. We feel we have made some adjustments to the plan to address that.
I'm glad you addressed that question because.
Yes. We've been kind of jumping all over. We've kind of gotten ahead, and you're right. The next question was the, was rock and encountering rock when planting trees. And that's a legitimate question. The four soil borings, no, excuse me. There were six soil borings taken on this site. They indicate rock as high up as two feet. Most balls, a ball of a 65-gallon tree or a three-inch-caliper tree will be 20 inches deep. We have several means. We have several means to deal with that rock, which is the question here. Having a tree ball sit on a rock layer, I can't blast or excavate the rock, but there's several things I can do. If our ball, if we have a bigger tree and it's a, it's a three-and-a-half-inch caliper and the ball goes from 20 inches to 24 or 30 inches, most of the trees we're planting, I will be able to earth contour and create general rises. So if I need to gain a little bit of height, I can do it that way. The plan is synergistic. The plan works with hardscape, softscape, trees, plants. So I can't just automatically move the trees out of the rock area, because rock underlays, if six boreings show that the rock can be, that could be only two foot of soil cover, I need to consider that.
So it, but if you, so even if you build up the soil, which I think is what you're saying, right, it's still impermeable relatively close to the bottom of the root wall. So how does, how does that work over time? How does?
Well, we, I, we've seen tree roots fracture rock. It depends on what kind of rock, okay? We, and, and water tends to move horizontally as well, and water sheds off of a burned area. I'm not, I'm giving you options that we've come across, okay? We have fractured rock ourselves before planting trees, and not me myself personally, but we fractured rock. So it's with six soil boreings, with, with six soil boreings, I can't give you a definitive answer, but I'm ready to assist the contractor. Some things will have to be decided in the field. I may have to relocate some groupings. I don't like to isolate a tree. Say I have a, a beautiful curvilinear grouping of five trees of one species that are staggered. If I run into rock, I'm just mentioning to you, I know you're thinking that the rock that the trunk is sitting on is impermeable, but we do planting in trenches where we have tree grates, but we have a full trench. Tree roots will send their roots horizontally when they indicate that they can't go down. So it'll be a multiple disciplinary approach to it. I don't have just the, the right answer, but I'm just giving you some of the options. Just options.
And all of the trees that you plant, I'm sorry. All the trees that you plant, whatever the caliper of the, those trees might be, you will put some deer guards on so that deer rubbing won't destroy the?
Again, we like meeting with committees like this so that we can get ideas and answers. It's not presently on the plan. There's a lot of trees we're planting. Do you really want us to do, is it necessary on all species that we do those deer guards?
I don't think it's necessary on evergreens.
Okay.
I do think it's necessary.
Deciduous?
Shade trees, whether they're ornamental. I, you know, I'm not sure what the exact size of each shade tree is, but you, when you walk out to your car later, go look at some of the trees that are lining the driveway, the deer.
Okay.
Basically destroyed them. And again, you will be near the reservation. The deer roam freely?
I know they roam. I've only been in town just today, and I've already seen a lot of deer. A lot of deer.
They, they, they like to rub the velvet off of their, they like the trees to do that with.
Well, I'm glad we don't have to do it for the evergreens, but we will take a look at that.
Okay.
Just, just for context, we've been doing township road construction projects that include the replacement of township shade trees. And we found that half the trees that we put in, in a development before, we, we've now started a policy of putting up deer guards on all of the trees for the season, at least where they're at risk, but we've had large percentages of trees that were brand-new plantings get destroyed and run down.
Thank you.
Highly recommend.
So noted. We will.
Money saving.
Yeah.
It's just a protection that you put into place to make sure that your tree matures without getting damaged.
Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Okay. The next comment, 19, asked that we had provided a detail for site lighting, and I already described to you the two types of lights. But we did answer this question that we do have it indicated on our plan. The light bollards are shown on sheet L-102, L-103, and L-104 for the courtyards, and the pedestrian lights are shown on sheet L-101, as I said, marching along sunset, coming up the pedestrian walk along to the front of the building. And we don't, we have not done photometrics. Our office doesn't do photometrics. This job is not completely finished in terms of drawings, so it may be useful for me to talk to the owner about having the electrical engineer on the team do photometrics. It's not hard. I picked the lights. Once I pick the lights, photometrics can be done, and you can see if there's dark spots, and you can see if the lighting is adequate. And again, the Linnea bollard is considered dark sky, and the Nihaven Lewis-Pulson light is shielded and is considered a good choice for this kind of environment. And then we agree with Boswell's review letter. We never, again, I think Portland is just, it was just a trip working there. They're very bird-conscious, they're very light-conscious, and we don't ever use above 3,000 K. We, we simply consider that the cutoff for light, so we would never use beyond that. And we'll make sure, this is in plan view, but we'll, we'll, we'll give cut sheets from the manufacturer to the developer so that they see what we want.
May I, may I expand briefly upon the lighting color temperature? The color temperature argument, a lot of it stemmed from the lighting that was to go on top of the parking garage. What we're concerned about also with light. So what I would say with that is that for landscape lighting, potentially, you could consider even going lower than that. Like even a 3,000 K landscape light is a little whitish unless you have a specific reason to use it. You might even consider a 2,700 or, or lower. The concern with all of the lighting on this project is neighborhood compatibility, particularly with the single-family residences that are immediately across the street and that are going to be looking out their front window at the project, and to minimize spill-over off of the project. So as you finalize your lighting choices, placement, and direction and so on, I'd ask that you keep those elements.
Thank you.
In consideration.
Will do that, and we have used 2,700 before. I'll see if these lights come in that. 3,000's very close.
Right.
And I am not working on the garrestop.
Right, right.
I wish I could help. I've thrown ideas out. I, I'm afraid that's going to be, have to be solved by the architect and the engineer. I, I, I just can't go there.
We, we appreciate it. That's just some more context on the lights, that a 3,000 is a maximum and not.
It's a maximum. And we, and we'll see if they come in 2,700, and we have done 2,700 before.
Thank you.
And we'll do a photometric, the MEP engineer can do a photometric study with the manufacturers we've given and see if there's dark spots and how it feels.
Lights bill, et cetera.
Right.
Actually brings up, thank you, Mayor Roman, on, on qualifying that. I agree, like 3,000 is about as cool as it should get, and she, you know, lower the better.
And as warm as a year, exactly. Oh, sorry. You're right, as cool as it should get.
As cool as it should get. And I'm not sure what the lumens are, they're different from the color temperature, but.
Then we want LED lighting because we want longevity, and they have made it better and better and better, and we can get that kind of control on color and intensity.
Color and the intensity.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if you've taken into account some of the spill-over from the lights on, say, the garage or on other parts of the building that will affect, you know, the, the ground lighting that you're doing.
That's a great point. If there's sconces and different things on the building cans, but I can't do that, but the MEP can. As long as people feed the MEP the information he needs or she needs to run photometrics, they can probably do that. And I, and I don't know what the solution for the top parking, I've just been in team meetings hearing that discussed.
Finally, I just commend you. I'm a sad sidewalk astronomer around here. I'm, you know, as dark sky as possible. I, I appreciate that you're saying that.
I, I go to different places. A friend of mine is going to Big Bend National Park this weekend, where it's the darkest place in the North American continent. I appreciate that.
I have to go a long way just to get a little stargazing in.
Yeah, I, I'll bet you do. That, that concludes my, I wouldn't say formal, but that, that's what I prepared to, to present to this committee, and if you have any questions, I'm very happy to answer them.
I think you addressed all of mine, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, mine was around the arborvitae and trying to reduce the number of diversified, so the rest of it was pretty comprehensive.
Thank you. Good. Appreciate it.
My mouth is warmed up. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
And, you know, I'll get, listen, I appreciate also the calling with the native cover. I think aside, like, it's not weeds. It is where the birds are living, is where the rabbits, squirrels, chipmunks go in and out, and leaving that as unperturbed allows, you know, the wildlife residents to go on just like we want our, our human residents to go on.
Exactly.
As they please. So I appreciate that and the attention to the, keeping as much of the larger trees. Which I just want to clarify, you to clarify on this drawing that's up here, the lighter, so I'm interpreting it correctly, the, the fully opaque colored tree representations here are your, are your new plantings, and the semi, the translucent, the semi-opaque ones are the existing, uh.
Forest.
You are leaving base.
Yes, we hope that all survives, and we are going to put fencing around it to make sure and not let them clean the site, scrape, scarify the site.
Very good. Um, if I directed you, like, this would be the southeast corner and slash the upper-left of the, of the drawing. So there's a, you know, the, the property adjacent to there, and particularly, obviously, the, the neighborhood in general, and this goes to the lighting, the garage lighting, and this is where I think, you know, your job is critical on getting this rather large development to play nicely with the rest of the neighborhood. So it sounds like you're doing all you can, it feels like you're here. Describe what you are putting here, and can you improve it, or is it, is it to your satisfaction, particularly the house that is adjacent, and, you know, across the, the street and the most nearby houses, what are you doing to block as much light and building facade as possible?
Okay. I think the area you're talking about, just let's forget northeast, southwest, just look at this plan. I think you might be talking about the area in the upper-left of this drawing.
Correct.
And you see that wavy line near the building? That's the spade-cut line. That's the line where we stop our formality or our newness, and the forest takes over, okay?
I see.
So everything that looks like grass, and as you noted, that has the more translucent kind of, you can see the light green, and then even where we can't survey, we might not have had the survey, but my, my associate may have gone on aerial mapping to get tree lines of where tree lines are, okay? So if, if we show that, that means that we did it. It, it may be on the survey, or may, we may have done it. So that's the native cover that we're leaving. Now, if you have a specific request because of a specific home, that you feel that we should go into that native cover and maybe put a grouping of five pines or five cedars because it would help that one resident, then you need to send me, or send, you know, through John, show me, because it's off-property, I don't have that survey, send our, our office through the attorney a sketch or anything that shows me where that house is, and even though we don't want to go into native cover, and, but you can see we're kind of doing this curved line, it doesn't mean we can't get a grouping very close and alter that a bit to get some more pine trees to help that one resident. But that's not.
Having the benefit of visiting there, I'm, you know, and the house is not drawn here, it's not surveyed, it's hard to tell, but, and that resident has come, and maybe you're in here now, you know, specifically to these meetings. I, if, if, that should be a great follow-up.
Do we know the address of the, of the house that you're concerned about? Because that would help.
John Afterglow, it's the second one after the property, or the first one after this property, and I don't know the number.
Is that the?
Yeah.
Afterglow, I think it was, it was Champsworth.
I don't want to get so far into that, into that forest canopy, but I still, if I know where that house is. But if, you know what, I, I agree with Tim.
Fifteen was the.
I'm sorry.
The address.
Okay. Um.
Yeah.
It looks like a lot of open area there, and I'm not saying fill it, you know, but I'm saying maybe infill a little and enhance the buffer for that, not just the house, but also the building.
Okay.
You know, like it.
Can be done.
Ways. It would be nice to infill that a little bit with some.
One of our four or five species of evergreens that we're.
Exactly.
Can be done.
And since you're in the neighborhood, you know, maybe take a look, but I'm hoping that we can make this as, as a, Mr. Argentino, a, a follow-up to, to address, you know, we have the landscape architect here to.
If we, if we have, if actually you get to Mr. Mousara, the, the actual address, we can include that as a condition, and we'll agree to enhance the buffering and work with the, the board engineer in that regard.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you. I, just a couple more things now having to do with the human beings that are going to be on this, now that we've got the wildlife and the nature. So the, specifically, the two courtyards that are on the, you know, the bottom part that, that.
Which, which two?
The pool. And the passive courtyard.
Yes. You want to see enlargements of those?
No, 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 fine. Are they, are residents able to, I don't see a specific walkway, and it's fine if it's a natural walk, can they walk from the, the pool to the passive without having to go back into the building?
No. But they can get out, you see the walk has been added to the left of the pool.
Yes.
There's a walkout, and in the passive courtyard, it's under the trees a little bit, but it's also to the left. That was, that was an egress requirement. I didn't do that just for the convenience of the residents, it was an egress requirement, having to do most likely with the square footage and the building escape, in other words. But you cannot, there is no formal walk either outside, inside, I can't speak to the inside of the building. Of course, there's a corridor in the building, and they can go out to any courtyard, but there is no way to get from one courtyard to the next.
To the next. I mean, if they walk through that egress and then, you know, go left and go.
Yes.
Left or right, depending, are they prohibited?
They're not prohibited. There'll be a gate, and now how they do security on a project will depend on the operating manager, on many multifamily, which, and I'm a woman, so I'm real conscious of security, but it's doubtful that those gates will be able to be accessed by anybody but the residents, and I'm not certain. A lot of times you have emergency exits from buildings, and I don't know how that's going to be programmed exactly, but I don't see a connectivity. Each courtyard has its own feel, and they're all open to the residents and that type of thing.
And this might be, you know, for the regular architect, and, and I'm not suggesting anything here, I just, you know.
Okay.
Since I've got you, there's no formal path, and I'm not asking for one. I mean, if somebody wants to tiptoe over and meet somebody in the passive one, fine, they'll get a little grass on their feet. So it's, in the, a long time you've been doing these urban developments, it's 2011, you said.
Oh, I've been working much longer than that.
Much longer than that.
But the apartments, I'm in the city in the United States that has just, apartments have just gone crazy, but when you study cities everywhere in other countries and stuff, there are so many people living in multifamily. It's just now the United States is really getting to urban density and development. But in any event.
So do you visit the completed developments and, and take a look at them as they, as people have begun to live in them and say over the.
Of course.
Uh, one year, two years, five years?
Of course. If, as, as much as I can, I've been to, I had three jobs in, in Phoenix, and then I have a lot of work in Portland. It's because the developer that I've done work for is working there. They used to be a developer in Portland, and now they're doing projects there. So I always do what's called a final punch, so I'm always going to see the project completed. Most of contract administration while the project is being built. My part does. is being built. My part doesn't come a little bit more towards the end.
Yeah.
Okay? The building, even, even our hardscape, they, they don't put that in real early because it'll get damaged by construction. But, uh, I wish I could go back to every job that we've done every two years, three years, four years, but it, but yes, we.
Do you occasionally visit just to see like, you know, do people actually use the grills? Like, like, you know, you have the grill and.
Well, I can, I can rank for you since we've been doing this, the most used space in any courtyard in any development is the open lawn area. That's why we almost always include the open lawn area. The second most popular use in courtyards, and I'm talking about amenity courtyards. They can be on rooftop. They can be surrounded by a building like these. We do a lot of them on rooftop. The most second used amenity is fire pits.
That's right.
People love fire pits. You have to realize that just like people in houses, these people that live here will be working. Some of them will be working. They love to go out and use fire pits. And I realize you don't get quite the year-round usage that other areas get. And so we try to be very cognizant of that, very cognizant. We know pools are put, put down for the winter. And so we're trying to create like mural wall and things that, that add color and brightness. So, yeah. I don't know if I've answered your question.
No, you did. And, and, you know, I'm basically, um, uh, I'm interested in, so one, as you were building that up, I was, in my mind, I'm like, it's fire pits. So, okay, good. Hey, I'm good at this. Um, I'm interested in the wear and tear and if the, um, uh, the, materials and the design and the layout, one is, in your, in your opinion, these are actually functional things. They don't just say sell apartments or sell leases, that they're actually used, number one. And number two, that they don't wear out in two or three years and, you know.
You know, the kind of, the kind of, uh, amenity products.
Yes.
That we pick are meant for, you know, they've been powder coated and they, and they are from major manufacturers that are tested and proven and, you know, oil red bronze and, no.
Okay.
They're, they're still going to get a beating. Everything that's outside gets a beating, but as good as we can.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Um, okay. Um, at this time, we would, sorry. At this time, any member of the public that has any questions for the applicant and, uh, the expert, please come to the mic. Do not state your street address. Just state your name and your municipality. Thank you.
Sure. Robert Blitz, B as in boy, L I T U Z as in zebra.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In your testimony, when you were talking about the courtyards, you said that you were doing everything you could to try to keep them as quiet as possible or something similar to that. Do you recall that statement?
We call one, it's the name we've given it to. We call it the quiet courtyard. Yes. But the passive courtyard is quiet as well. But yes, we, we think about that, especially with buffering. We, we've done several things in that quiet courtyard that's closest to those homes. I can describe other things that I haven't talked about yet.
Thank you. That, that's getting to the justified question. You used the word and I'm trying, but on a quarter, obviously, they use the word, try to keep it quiet. Can you be a little more specific?
Yes.
About the specific things that you're doing within your design to keep it quiet? And are there any software programs or any other measurable things that you could tie your design into that can actually measure or estimate the impact of that noise?
Okay. Yes. Um, if you'll go to, I'm going to do one specific courtyard, the one we call the quiet courtyard first. If you'll go to L 104.
And for folks here, that's, uh, 84427.
I finally got it. So here, you can see a tremendous effort to buffer at the top of the screen. And if you go to the site plan, you'll see that even extending further. But we've done more than that. There, we have 72-inch height fencing that's solid. We've done this on projects before. So we're using that as a sound barrier a bit. Do you understand all the other fencing on the project is open pickets?
I do understand to answer your question, but I also understand that, uh, solid, um, you can use different materials on a solid fence. Some would be absorbing, some could actually reflect and magnify noise.
Well, that's not our intention, but I'm not a sound engineer.
I understand. With terms of selecting material for that fence, was that something that was considered based upon specifications of what, how the material interacts with noise?
No, the, the, the buffering, it, it's kind of a known fact that the evergreen buffering will mitigate some noise and we.
Evergreen is a tree that you're talking about fencing?
No, no, I'm, I'm getting to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we, we felt that since neighbors, the neighborhood was close, we would, uh, put a solid fence there. Okay? Have we studied the materials and the noise reflectivity of the materials? No, but that's a suggestion that we can certainly, one of the reasons for coming in person and having this kind of meeting is to gain ideas. And you can see that we are responsive to that. So we can certainly look into it. But I'm not a sound expert, so I can't tell you that a material that I would pick, we've given that some thought. Let me tell you some of the other things about this courtyard.
Let me just a quick question while you're talking about that.
Sure.
And I really, you know, a lot of the things in any engineering design, construction, they described it for 30 years, different functional expertise works together well. You yourself noted legitimately, obviously, tonight, several times that you do this, the civil engineer does that. But in the end, as we're seeing now, some of these things can't be fully examined on a subject without multiple functionalities here at the same time, such as the sound piercing. In prior projects that you've had, you've used fencing before to, to try to mitigate noise, correct?
Not fencing to mitigate, fencing won't mitigate noise. We didn't do this to mitigate noise as much as we did to separate that and have a solid barrier so people couldn't see in.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. I, I thought we were talking about, my questions were about noise at first. I thought the fence was being put in this design for noise. It's not for noise?
No, it's not for noise. It's for security and privacy.
Okay.
Okay?
Regardless of the intent of, will be a fence there?
Mm-hmm.
Can there be analysis down the road in selecting the material of that fence to ensure that it absorbs rather than reflects noise?
We could, we could look into it. That's not something I'm expert on, but we'll put it, my, my associate here, the project manager is taking notes. But I was going to tell you some of the other considerations of this courtyard because we were very aware of the homes nearby. So this courtyard is not planned as intensively as the other courtyards. This courtyard has two areas to sit. It doesn't have as much activity planned as the other courtyards. It has a simple shade trellis with a fire pit. And if for some reason someone in the neighborhood or on this commission felt that they didn't even want a fire pit, it's possible. Anytime you draw people together, you have the interaction of people. So there'll be more noise. We certainly don't intend for this to be a party place. So that's what we have. We have one paved area here with a simple trellis, a bench, a fire pit, and they've been asked to show the chairs around the fire pit. And then we have another little sunning deck with two benches. You'll notice there's not dining tables. There's not chandeliers. There's not bar grills. There's not lots of different elements that might be typical for this high level of multifamily, but they're not in this courtyard. So that's, that's what I meant by noise. That was what we meant by the quiet courtyard. I never even thought of the fact that the 72-inch solid here had anything to do with noise abatement. It's, we've used those to make things private so that people, you know, just to make it private. So that was the.
I thank you for your answer.
Uh-huh.
Um, you earlier stated, I believe, that, I could have this wrong, so clarify for me that you are planting equal number of trees to the trees that are being removed? Or possibly you said slightly more. Which was it?
The, the number of trees, hold on a minute.
I, I believe you said several times they were exactly the same number. I could be wrong.
That were being removed?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I recall that.
Two hundred, 235 trees we are planting. It's not mentioning caliber inches right now. I'm talking about number of trees. Okay? And then the number of trees, I don't have the civil plan with me right now, but, hold on.
I think you indicated you, you concurred with the civil plan with regards to the removal of the trees.
Well, I was trying to give the gentleman the number of trees being removed because I know it's here.
Am I asking a specific number? I'm only saying for this lead into a question.
I think 185 were slated for removal.
A certain number, a certain number. I don't care the number myself. A certain number of trees are being removed and a equal number were being planted.
No. I'm not, that's not correct. The number of trees being removed from the site.
Didn't you say that?
No. The number of trees being removed from the site.
Okay, you said something similar. Sorry.
No.
Go ahead.
The number of trees being removed from the sites determined by the civil, somewhere in all these papers, I've got it. But it's less than the number of trees we're planting. We're planting more trees than are being.
Okay, now, now I'm going to ask my real question here. So, you know, if I had a stand of 10 redwoods, which are not in my, in the, around about 10 redwoods, and someone said, I'm going to have to plant 10 saplings, it would be a factual statement that an equal number of trees are being replaced. Or if 20 saplings were being planted, someone could testify that double the number of trees are being put in compared to what was removed. So if you took the trees that are being removed, measure the height, measure the diameter, measure the volume, measure the amount of weather, of where that's being absorbed by it, measure the oxygen that is being released by those trees. Could you give me a general idea of the size of the trees being planted versus, or the volume of trees being planted versus the volume of trees being removed?
Well, it, it's not done in volume. You make a good point. Some ordinances in some townships will have you indicate the caliber inches being removed and they have to be replaced with the same caliber inches. That's the way the ordinance is written. Okay?
Can I just?
Can I just, I'm sorry. Our ordinance in the township of Verona requires that trees of certain calipers have to be replaced in certain amounts. So if they're removing a 24-inch tree, they have to replace it with four trees. So your question really is, are you doing your tree removal replacement in accordance with our ordinance and the answers they are? I'm letting you know that I went through every single tree that they were moving size. Now, I did not go and measure them myself to make sure that they weren't, but I'm, I'm letting you know that accordingly, the volume of trees that are being replaced meet our ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask my next question. When you decide how many trees to be planted, is there a consideration of over time, the number of trees that you would expect not to survive over time? Because I'm sure there's statistics that say something like for every 10 arborite planted, one won't make it through the first year, two won't make it through the third year. And do you prepare and plant to accommodate that almost certain loss of trees?
One of the, one of the safeguards that's built into this ordinance is that there has to be a two-year guarantee on trees. Studies have shown that most trees, I'm talking about newly planted trees, trees in a forest have all kinds of decline rates. I can't, I'd have to bring an arborist to examine each tree to tell you what the, uh, what the future holds. But on this particular job with this township's ordinance, most trees, newly planted trees, which is what I'm in charge of, will not survive the two years. In other words, they will be replaced if they fail. Okay? So that, that's, that's the only answer I could give.
Replaced under an agreement that the developer has or do you?
It's law. They have to be replaced.
And also under, under the agreement between the, the developer and the township.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Let me ask you my next question.
Uh-huh.
Um, you were talking about a fence and you made a point a couple of times that since that fence already existed, replacing or enhancing that fence won't have an effect on existing trees. Correct? That is what you said. Let me ask what you think now. If that's what you said, correct?
If we're replacing a fence that's already in place, it's a lot less destructive than placing a fence that has not been in place.
What are you saying, less destructive? Before you didn't say less destructive. You said it wouldn't have any impact on the tree. That would declare the.
Yeah. Well, I will also give you another declarative though, sir. Where we're placing that fence, which is also on the engineering drawings, our drawings are coordinated, that fence must be placed, whether it slightly damages a tree occasionally. I can't promise that contractors will be perfect, but we strive for perfection. There's a drop-off there. That fence will be placed. Yeah.
That was my question. I'm aware that the fence has to be placed. It's not my question. It's not necessarily an answer question that I'm asking. Let me continue on this subject. The existing fence that is there, I would imagine has posts that go into the ground. I haven't seen the fence. If there are posts that are holding the fence there and there's trees that are already there, there's more than a good possibility that tree roots are, some of them, they'd be surrounding those posts very tightly because they grew over time. When those posts are taken out or new posts are driven, isn't there a possibility and a fear possibility that those roots will be damaged?
I suppose there would be. I mean, we can look into leaving the fence that's there, but the, uh, engineer has kind of made that ruling. There, there's no guarantees in life that, that things will not, I'm sorry, I'm giving you the best answer I can.
But in a, but in a previous meeting.
It was the question.
Hold on. But in a previous meeting, we agreed that the fence would be replaced. That was a stipulation, given that there was a fensery on the property that was of degraded quality.
I was here. I understand that. That's my question. The fence has to be replaced, but the methodology by which that fence.
Looking for. I'm, I'm asking you what you, you're, you're kind of winding around and you're kind of, I, I'm asking you what you are looking for. You're looking for a guarantee that if a tree is damaged, that it, it will be replaced?
No.
That, that.
No.
The fact that a tree might be repla, might be damaged is a possibility. They just said it. So I'm asking you where, what do you go, where are you going with this?
Let me explain to you since you're asking a question. They just said that right now, but during the earlier testimony, they didn't say there could be damage, but it's less likely the cost. There's already a fence there. They said, or she said, there will be no damage. It was very declarative. So I brought up the point that there could be damage.
Okay.
And now going to make another point, which is that when the fence is installed, there may be various ways of installing a fence that would be more friendly and mitigate that. My main point was to point out that, that there is the black and white guarantee, which is what was inferred by the testimony. Okay. Earlier in your testimony, you mentioned something about a pedestrian walkway. I wasn't quite sure, some Harvard reading maps, where is that pedestrian walkway?
Uh, if you could, if you could.
Could bring up LS 01? Say what LS 01?
I guess that would be 81427.
I'm going to show you when he brings up the plan. It takes a bit. If, with, with your permission, would you like me to point it out on the plan in front of me to the gentleman instead of the screen? If you'll come over. If you'll come over here for a moment? Just don't get real close to him. Okay. Well, I'd like the rest of the commission to hear. It's just an internal walk to the project.
On the, on the sites, on the site itself?
Yes, it is, yes. It's this walk.
Okay, I just didn't understand.
Did you all see what I'm showing?
I only have one final question.
That's lined with those pedestrian lines. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one more question, some of this might relate to, I always forget your last name, the attorney here. You were talking about, there's only been a few borings on the property.
Six.
Okay, six, and because of that, um, there can necessarily be perfect planning or, or planning, something along those lines, which is obviously correct, um, of issues that may arise, and that you would have to perhaps, you know, on site as things were going on, adapt, right, which has to happen sometimes. My question is, wouldn't an alternative path be to do more borings beforehand so that adequate planning could be done in advance, and so that this board could review those plans in advance, rather than waiting and seeing what more borings would have given you information on?
Okay, well, I'm just being brought to my attention that John wants to...
Yeah, I, I know that this witness is the one to testify as to the borings that are required. I think that's more of an engineering issue, and so you may want to come to the next meeting for that.
Well, the borings from a structural point of view, and the number that are required for what you're talking about, is a civil engineering decision. She entered into discussion that she also has a use of borings to help assist with the landscape design, so...
Right, but she's not testifying as to the number of borings.
I accept, I accept what you're saying. Which is why I said there might be more down the road on whether it would help to do more borings.
Well, it's an engineering, it's an engineering question. She, she's not the witness to testify as to the number of borings.
Let me rephrase my question then. You're right, of course. Would it be helpful to you in your design of landscaping, for landscaping purposes only, to have more information about the site structure, the depth of rock, and the greater area that you have right now?
And, and let me give you the answer, since the question was posed to me by the engineering consultant from the township of Verona. They asked me the question, "How would you handle planting trees if rock was encountered?" And I gave them several options, not necessarily more borings, I gave other options of slight burning, of relocating, so I'm gonna defer to the attorney and leave the number of borings to the civil engineer.
I, I thank you for your good answers, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Your name, please? And municipality?
Sure, my name is Chris Riley, R.E.I.L.L.Y., I'm from Verona. Um, on this, I, I guess I'm confused, and I just want to get some clarity for myself in terms of the numbers of trees that are being fancied about here. So, the map here is, I believe, a map of Verona and Montclair. When you quote the number of trees, are you talking about the numbers of trees in Verona, or the numbers of trees in Verona and Montclair?
The, the, the dividing line between Verona and Montclair are, is shown on the documents. So, the tree number that we're indicating on the plan, and it's on the plant list, is on Verona.
Okay.
Not Montclair. You may see some existing vegetation that's been mapped, as I mentioned, to the committee that, to the plan commission, that, but the, the proposed trees are on Verona.
Okay, so, just to be clear, this is a, a map of Verona and Montclair, and, um...
Here, let me see if I can, let me see if I can answer your question a little bit easier here in person. There's one of these exhibits that shows you that line here. Could you step o, do you mind?
If you just, if you just express to the board what you're showing...
She's, she's looking at the, uh, eight-three, four-twenty-seven, which is the passive courtyard plan.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it does show that line that separates Montclair and Verona.
Okay, no, I just wanted to be clear, just that, again, the, the picture that's been up most of the night has been of Verona and Montclair, and I just want to make sure that when you talk about a certain number of trees coming in and coming out, that you're only talking about the trees that are in Verona.
Well, well, I've been informed that, that I am not right, so that what you're saying is correct. So, step up here for a minute, Tony. This is Tony Stewart, the project manager, who's done these drawings. He can't testify, he's just telling me something. I was just telling him to say hello.
Cover the mic for a moment, so you can refer to your resource.
Thank you.
I, I, is it, oh, oh, men, the AV squad. How's the number of trees, two eighty-five?
And how many are coming in?
Who's this that?
All right, let's go to this.
First, it's Verona's.
So, let me answer your question.
Thank you.
We're removing three trees from Montclair, but we're adding fifty trees in conjunction with that existing fence that we're replacing, and since the fence is vertical pickets, it will be a benefit to both townships.
Are you adding fifty trees to Montclair or to Verona?
Montclair. Well, look at the location of the fence line, and look at the location of the existing forest, and look at the fact that we're putting these trees in front of that forest and clothing that fence line, it makes sense. But that's a, that's, that's a good point. It, but I can't add them to Verona. The, the Montclair-Verona line, which I was telling you on that exhibit, is real close to your building. It's still up high. It's still up high. The fence is where the drop-off is.
I'm sorry, I remember that the building itself is basically shaped to fit within the Verona portion of the property, so there really isn't a lot of land in Verona on that side of the building. Is that what, is that a fair characterization?
Well, the characterization is, with the geography of the site, there's an existing fence that's gonna be replaced, okay? There's a tree canopy that exists, there's a retaining wall here, there's a drop-off, and the fence is a fall protection. We are adding trees all along that fence. But you are correct.
So...
They are on Montclair, lighten it.
Right, so, just so that I'm clear, how many trees are you taking out in Verona, and how many are you putting in?
Well, there, you said you're taking three, three down in Montclair, but adding fifty?
Approximately.
Your total trees to be removed, I'm sorry.
Total trees to be removed, I was mistaken before, according to matrix, is one hundred and twenty-two. So, one hundred and nineteen in Verona, of different and varying sizes.
Are being taken down.
That, that will be removed.
Right.
In lieu of putting buildings and whatever pools...
And one hundred and nineteen in Verona are being taken down, and how many are being put in?
A total of two hundred and thirty-five trees, but then if you minus the fifty, we're still mitigating plenty. I, I would have to look into that. Yeah, and I will too, because I'm doing it from what the site... Because every tree size matters. I'm doing it from what the site says to me. I, I can't put trees on this facade that faces Montclair on Verona land, because the building is right near the property line, so I'm planting the trees where they should be in conjunction with...
No, no, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I guess in terms of just...
We need to make sure the mitigation works.
We use Montclair conveniently at times and not at times, and we should just be consistent. The other question I have is, the numbers of trees in Verona that are being added, how many of those are the ornamental trees that are surrounding the pool and the quiet room, or the quiet area and the, and the other sections?
I can do a count of those probably real quickly, the majority of the trees are being used in the screening. Give me a second, and I'll tell you.
Sure, thank you.
Fifteen in the swimming pool courtyard?
Fifteen.
Fifteen in the passive courtyard?
Twenty-nine so far. Three, four.
Four in the quiet courtyard, four.
That would be thirty-three, right? Mr. Encino? Carry the one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, of the trees that are being taken...
About two hundred and thirty-five, so two hundred and two elsewhere, and fifty of those two hundred and two elsewhere are going to be in Montclair.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, if I, if I can sum up his con, or if I interpret his, interpret his comments, I think the argument that's being made here is that the tree mitigation strategy, the purpose of it should essentially benefit the Verona adjoining properties, and should provide additional screening to Verona properties wherever possible. But this sort of dovetails into what the applicant has said, with, that where there are properties that need targeted additional enhancement to the, the existing buffer, um, if the applicant was willing to add trees to those areas where we felt the tree line was thin or otherwise inadequate to screen the adjacent properties, that they would be amenable to doing so, is that...
Correct, that's correct, we would. And listen, I, you know, I think the testimony has been what is best for the existing forest.
Right.
And, and so, candidly, I think the number of trees respectfully is irrelevant, what is relevant is that it's the right plan. If the right plan involves more trees, the applicant is willing to do that. There's no skipping on trees in Verona intended. Trying to come up with the right landscape architectural plan for the site, I think you've heard extensive testimony in that regard, the intention is not to skip on trees in Verona. Feeling is that there are more trees that are required, applicant has no objection to that.
It, it sounds like what we need here is targeted specifics. I mean, if we feel that the tree, you know, having heard the argument of what is intended to remain out of the existing tree canopy, if we're able to identify where we think there might be a problem, um, and then make a specific request of the applicant to enhance at that location, rather than simply saying, you know, increase the number of trees on the property, that might be more...
And Mr. Mayor, as I indicated, the applicant will agree to that as a condition of approval. There was one house in particular, I think it was fifteen afterglow.
It is fifteen.
Okay, fifteen afterglow. So, yeah, I mean, will agree as a condition of approval to work with your engineer in terms of enhancing, whether it's more trees or whatever it is to, you know, further buffer the existing homes. We have no, no problem in doing that whatsoever. We're just, we're trying to get this right, right? Is that fair, or am I over, am I oversumming?
I think he used more words than I did, Mr. Roman. I would have just said, you know, you should just be honest with us and tell us how many trees you're taking down in Verona, and how many you're putting up in Verona. How many of them are being decorative trees inside the building, or inside the shape of the building, and how much is, is gonna be left around?
Right, I, I take issue with your comment about honesty, candidly. I don't think that's fair, I just...
I didn't say honesty.
You, you said that they could just be honest, that's what you said.
Right, but let's not get into this, let's just...
Just move on, please, let's just decide...
Again, I, I, I want to go, I, I think that the analysis method is interesting, um, you know, it certainly is valuable to statistically look at this a little bit, but I feel like what we really need to do on the community side of this is make a specific argument to the applicant to say, "Here, here, and here needs more, and let's, let's put it into the, let's put it into what's gonna actually happen here," so that we get a firm commitment and it gets...
And we're willing to do that.
Right, right. So, I would ask, um, Madam Chair or, or engineer, however we can, however we can evaluate and make that specific recommendation.
We, we agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Tim has a suggestion.
Just, well, yeah, so, in, in particular landscape, uh, you know, addressing the strategic placement of them to blend in with the neighborhood and mitigate, uh, you know, light or, or dealing with the building is, should be your first priority, as far as, you know, trees... Yeah, I got you, I got you, trees, trees, um, you know, unless trees pay taxes, I don't care where they are, but, um, to, thank you, it's very funny. What I do think is interesting is, this goes to legal aspects on our ordinance, if they're replacing trees in Montclair, does that follow our ordinance, or is it a property?
I, I already brought that up.
Okay.
I mean, I already said, you know, I would have to check each caliber, every tree that was getting taken down in Verona versus Montclair, and go back and measure, okay? I can't do that.
As Mr. Riley said, as Mr. Riley said before, they can't use, and I, I don't think in any way it's intentional, you've heard, you know, you've heard...
Do you have an area in which you could suggest more infill trees besides the one near fifteen? Because I think that that's what we're trying to work on now.
No, near fifteen, otherwise, you know, like...
Any other suggested areas?
The only thing I'll say is along the Montclair line by the amenity sections, like, that's just, you know, that goes into Bloomfield Avenue and it's off, like, I don't know what we're getting there aside from the people driving forty miles an hour on Bloomfield Avenue. I don't mind, trees are good, trees are not just for blocking this.
Madam Chair, if, if, we heard the, we heard the...
We're good.
We heard the witness testify that with fifteen afterglow in particular, they would do what needed to be done. Mr. Encino has said they will do what needed to be done. Mr. Riley made a good point, that they can't use Montclair when it's convenient, and again, and not use Montclair, so I think the tree ordinance, we have to relook at, revisit, but other than that, I think, you know, I think the issue's resolved.
Aside, aside from fifty, like, I'm looking at this, like, the, the fill-in looks good to me along with what we're preserving, so I'm looking at the old, that existing...
Yeah, and I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the tree ordinance provides, but it's, it's not untypical municipalities that where you can't meet the mitigation, that there's payment into a fund.
Yes.
You know, so...
Take the money, if you can.
Look, we're, we're, we're gonna comply, we're gonna work with you to come up with the best plan and, and, you know, uh, no, no issue there.
We can take the caliber inches of the trees being removed from the civil survey. We can take the caliber inches of the trees being planted in Verona from our plant list, and, and we can assure that mitigation has been met by law. Then you might be getting a lot of extra trees that we felt were needed to buffer up, so it's, it's a valid question, there are answers to it, but I'm not prepared to state that exactly tonight, it's gonna take a bit of research, as the chair said, so let me get to it, I'm happy to do that. So, what you're gonna do is you're going to look at the, all of the trees... Holistically. All of the trees that are going to be removed, but the three in Montclair, look at the calipers of those, and then decide whether or not, um, decide how many replacements each would require according to...
each would require according to Chapter 493 in our general...
I will make sure that the mitigation required for the trees being removed is on the Verona site. That doesn't mean I'm going to eliminate trees that I've done on Montclair. I will analyze it for you. I have the data to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. One last question, thank you for that detailed answer there. I imagine that one of the selling points of this, these apartments is going to be the view of New York or the skyline view. Are you cutting any trees so that people will have a view?
No, sir, not that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Name and your municipality, please.
Jonathan McElroy, Verona.
Thank you.
Sure. Quick question, something for consideration potentially, but have pollinators entered into the equation of selection of plants? I hear, you know, like the seasonal colored plants, the perennials versus annuals, is that something that could be considered?
It could be. I know one of the trees we're using, tupelo wildflower, is real good for nesting in all kinds of wildlife. I could do a little more research. We have a pretty varied list. We have 17 trees, we've got ornamental grasses, we have a pretty extensive plant list. I can find out if, and of course, you can actually do pollinators even in annuals, but I can research that a little more and see, see if we have any more, not just pollinators, but habitat trees and things like that. I can do a little more research and let you know.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public have any further questions? Seeing none, anybody else from the board have any further comments or questions? So are you going to, just as a final to wrap it up, are you going to send us a report, Mr. Inglesino, that she creates from the data that she has?
I'm going to, first thing, Mr. Stewart, in my office that has been with us 26 years, he's taken careful notes, so we're going to write minute meeting notes, which we always do after a meeting.
And you'll forward it to us?
If the attorney says I can.
Mr. Inglesino?
Yeah, you forward it to me, and I can forward it to...
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, and then I'll, and then we'll tackle some of these questions, and we'll, we'll forward you answers. But first thing you'll get is minute meeting notes to make sure that our understanding is the same as your understanding of what we heard today, so.
Yes.
We'll follow through.
Chapter 493. Thank you. So, can I assume that this...
You have a transcript?
Yeah.
Send me the transcript.
I will. I will.
Mr. Inglesino, are you completed for the evening?
If there are no further questions of this witness, we are completed for the evening. And we are going to carry your application to the next public meeting of this body, which is the Fourth Thursday in May, which would be May 25th. Is that your understanding? Yes, it is. We have a couple of submissions that are being made next week, so they'll be there in plenty of time for the, for the 25th. I'm not requesting a special meeting because I want to make sure that there's sufficient time for those submissions to be made and reviewed, but there'll be submissions from Mr. Savage and a lesser submission from Mr. Raker. And then, Mr. Savage and Mr. Raker will be back on the 25th. Candidly, I don't think their testimony is going to take a lot of time, so we would envision probably wrapping up our testimony on the 25th. Okay. For the time being, you obviously consent to adjourn this matter? Yes. And to the members of the public, there'll be no further notice. This application will be carried until May 25th at 7:30 PM in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, this, the agenda which this body has not had in quite some time, a closed session item that needs to be discussed. So there is a resolution slash notice that needs to be read aloud to the public, and then once that is read aloud, we need a motion to approve that, and then a motion to go into closed session. And then, once the closed session is finished, we will return back here into open session. We're going to meet in closed session in the conference room in there, but if you could please read the notification to the public?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution I'm reading is, "Resolution authorizing a closed session of the Verona Planning Board to discuss the status and possible settlement of litigation involving DMH2 LLC. Whereas the Verona Planning Board is subject to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera." And whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey generally requires that all meetings of the public bodies be open and public, and whereas the Open and Public Meetings Act, Open Public Meetings Act further provides that a body, a public body may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting at which the public body discusses items enumerated in the Open Public Meeting Act at NJSA 10:4-12B, which items are recognized as requiring confidentiality, and whereas it is necessary and appropriate for the Verona Planning Board to discuss certain matters in a meeting not open to the public, consistent with NJSA 10:4-12B, and specifically subsection seven, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation which the public body is or may become a party. Now let it therefore be resolved by the Verona Planning Board pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey that the Verona Planning Board shall hold a closed meeting from which the public shall be excluded on April 27, 2023. The general nature of the subject to be discussed at said closed meeting shall be the status and possible settlement of potential litigation involving DMH2 regarding DMH2's application for development at 176200 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona, New Jersey. The minutes of said closed meeting shall be made available for disclosure to the public consistent with NJSA 10:4-13 when items which are the subject of closed session discussion are resolved and a reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Adopted at the regular meeting of the Verona Planning Board held on Thursday, April 27, 22 and 3. Somebody has to make a motion to move this?
Yes.
Make a resolution.
All right, the mayor moves, can I give it to him?
Second.
Give it to him.
Now we need a motion, now we need a motion if we want to close session.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you don't need to pass that?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Mr. Fresky, give it to him, he hasn't done it in a long time.
So we need to vote on that first?
I, I am going to abstain from this.
We still didn't even vote on the, on the motion for the resolution.
Wait, can we get a vote, is it just a hand? A voice vote?
Aye.
Okay, anyone, and I abstain?
Yes.
Please, for the record, and now we need a motion. Why don't you guys just stay here and I'll go?
No, I want to stay in the room.
Okay, I was going to say, I'm happy to go out.
I'll make a vote for the board after a second or three.
Okay, somebody second that motion?
Second.
Mr. Heinmann seconds, the mayor moves it.
Before we vote, members of the public, this meeting will resume after the executive session.
Okay. All members agreed except for I abstain. And he wants to go in the cute little room in the back there. I could leave and leave you all here.
He could leave.
I want to hear, I want to hear what you do.
Mr. Sarah? Can somebody call me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You and your president.
Okay. The second reported for your mind. The second session, second.
So we need copy those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you also a landscape architect? I'm sorry, are you also a landscape architect?
Yeah, right. He really is a nice guy.
He is.
He just can't help it.
Not without a nice mouth. I'm sorry.
Really? I was about to say Singapore. I was now suddenly in February.
Were there in February?
I was in New Zealand in November. I just had a crew of Australians and New Zealanders visit me yesterday. All right. As you said, we're personal. Returning to open session. What's that? What'd I say? We're returning to open session. At 10:11 PM. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. I second it.
Mayor Roman?
Seconded by... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the chairman answer.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Any opposed?
Okay, now, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Shot.
There we go.